Gallagher, so far I don't see Mr. Jones, but I don't anticipate that. Um.
Cheryl and Sonny.
Cheryl and Sonny. And, uh.
We need six.
Well, you have seven.
Oh, okay.
That bigger than six?
It is bigger than six.
Yeah, that's bigger than six.
We're good to go.
And Purnell is joining the meeting now.
Oh, great. So Dale, I guess the rest is up to you. It looks like things are streaming and just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, I'm gonna start it shortly. Okay, I would like to call to order the October eighth meeting of the Committee of the Hall. And ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Tuma.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Shawn.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Stevens. Ms. Stevens.
Stevens is logging in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon's absent at the moment. Uh, Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
And Council President Brady. Mr. Brady is also absent. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. And the third item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any anybody that has sent public comment for this meeting?
Mr. Chair, no one has sent public comment for this meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh. We don't have any minutes that need to be approved, so we're gonna go on to item number four, which is the main event of the day, which is the presentation on the ERP system installation from our consultant Zig Bursons.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I'd like to recognize that Ms. Stevens is also in attendance at this time.
Great, thank you. Okay, looks like we're getting a screen sharing. It's good. Zig, are you with us?
He may be on mute. I'll text him.
Okay, thank you.
Here we go.
I found it.
Be okay now? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Fantastic. And can everybody see my presentation slide?
Yes, we can see it on the screen.
And yes, okay, so this is the September report. Well. There we go. So we're gonna talk about where we are, the the status trends, we'll talk about the payroll deployment approach, the new one. Uh, wanna talk a little bit about the revised parallel testing approach. Uh, we do wanna talk about appropriations, budget and spending, and then an update with regard to project governance and our conclusions. So where are we? The bottom line is that the WFM and payroll launch has been deferred. Um, I mean, they're still targeting the end of March with a first paycheck in early April. Um, but, you know, they're they're not doing the staged approach, which would have which would have actually started uh payroll launches as early as uh October. Um, so it's another six month delay. Um, testing for open enrollment, it it's it started a little bit late. Um, and so it's entirely possible that they may have to defer the open enrollment date of ten nineteen. Uh, but I do I do know that they are making progress on on finishing the testing. Uh, budget formulation, part three, which is the Sherpa solution. And, you know, continues to receive very little attention that we people tend not to appear and not to mention it, and I think they should, you know, uh, so we can wrap that up as well. Uh, monthly closings have picked up. They were quite a few months in arrears, but have picked them up and they they just closed June. So they're still three months behind in getting the closings done, but they're moving forward. The other thing I think it's we we need to note is that, uh, you know, in in the plan, they had quite a few modules that were supposed to launch in April and and July. Um, and, you know, uh, they continue to kind of stretch out, can't quite can't quite reach conclusion. Um, as an example, they're doing refreshing refresh training for accounts payable right now. And then, uh, you know, the last two months of the weekly reports, we finally got a catch up on those. Um, but and but they're still one week in arrears, so the last week's report has not has not been published.
Uh, Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Ms. Baker.
Before we go any farther, on the open enrollment, we were told in the meeting that we had that they were on task and that there shouldn't be any other delays, and that open enrollment was one of those critical periods where it could really push us back detrimentally if we don't get that task done on time. Where are you in this open enrollment? Are we okay, or is there still some uncertainty of whether or not we're gonna meet deadlines?
I've got I've got some more detail to show you, uh, which will which will highlight what what the situation is. Cause they are still they they started the testing on open enrollment a couple of days late. Um, and they're they're still working on about eighty percent, which is about eighty uh scenarios that have as of two days as of two days ago, they weren't even started yet, and I'll show you that. And all that's saying is that it, you know, it's not, it's not in perfect shape. But I think they recognize that it's crucial, it's important, and they're they're they've got in for working quite quite diligently on on trying to get this thing squared away and finishing up the testing.
All right, I'll wait till you get to that screen.
Okay. Um, uh, you know, I I tend to pay attention to the executive steering committee meetings, and I've got several items here where I'm just kind of presenting to you what what they're talking about. Um, and, you know, I, you know, in terms of the closings, you know, they talk about the fact that the June is closed, but I think what I'm just making a comment that that still puts them three months behind. Um, so they need to keep keep doing that. The whole procurement section, you know, they have created a a where's my stuff tool, as you, in other words, how do you find out where your where your orders are, where your requisitions are? Um, and, you know, all I'm saying is that, you know, we've got some imprecision here, I mean, that that the contract management where's my stuff queue will be out soon. I am going, well, what does that mean? Um, and, um, so they're working on a procurement dashboard. You know, these are things that in theory should have been finished when they launched in April. Uh, so these things keep kind of stretching out. Um, and then we've got a list of updates for co- contracts management and strategic sourcing. You know, and I'm sitting there going, well, it isn't it supposed to be in production, so they really ought to be kind of treating that as as production updates instead of as instead of being part of the project. Uh, the in the executive steering committee meeting, they talked about the patch testing, and I think they mentioned that Monday in your briefing. Um, and, you know, continue to say that, you know, they're 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 on target, but here's last week's list of all the test cases, uh, you know, and you'll see that, you know, on the surface, you know, when you look when you look at the the number that have failed. Okay, you look at benefits, forty-three out of one hundred and sixty failed. So so that's not a good sign. But my understanding is that that has improved this week. In terms of payroll and WFM, you know, we've just mentioned that that they have replanned this. I think the key thing here is that the that that the team has a plan off, which I'll show you uh with for implementing payroll and WFM in the revised schedule. But it's not part of the master plan yet, so it's not really consolidated in with the overall plan. Which kind of means that, uh, you know, some things can can go off on a tangent without understanding dependencies from other pieces of the plan. Um, so the single the the single launch, the the that they have come to, I think it it basically does give the team breathing room because they did have the first group was supposed to launch in October. Uh, you know, so clearly that that kind of gave let them let them give the give it gave the team more time. You know, the cut over currently is scheduled, they they keep talking about the end of March and 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 the projections for their spend is for through is through March, yet the first paycheck's in April. You know, so I think we need to recognize that we need to where there's gonna be spent, there's gonna be expenditures, and there's gonna be time expended in April. Uh, not not, it won't end in March. Um, and then, you know, the they're they are talking about three and they're they call them end to end parallels. I call them womb to tomb. Which means that they're gonna go all the way back to entering time, something that I've suggested for months. And I think it's a good thing that they're doing that because you with new time clocks changes, new time collection, uh, software, which is WFM. Um, you know, you need to include that in terms of your testing cycle. Uh, but I do think that they need to be looked at very carefully and should be monitored with regard to the start and stop date. And there needs to be a better definition of parallel, because I think there's an assumption when somebody uses the word parallel that is not quite correct now because they're gonna use a subset of employees and not all employees. Here's the chart I was talking about. The the open enrollment testing, which this was this was presented in the executive steering committee this week, so it's current. Uh, and as you can see, you know, as of Monday, um, one hundred, no, excuse me, Tuesday, as of Tuesday, one hundred in open enrollment uh scenarios had not even been started out of one hundred and twenty-six. You know, so and that's and 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 only only one scenario had passed. And that part of that is because, like, as I said, they started late. They were supposed to start Monday and they didn't. Um, and so, you know, that that immediately starts affecting, you know, how quickly they can get finished. Uh, so it, all I'm suggesting is that, you know, and my understanding is that they are working on that stuff. And that supposedly about another twenty-five have been started. Um, so, but but the point is that you start late, you you is a good possibility you end up finishing late as well.
Could you? Could you explain what this last line means? It says pass with issues?
That means it didn't pass. I it it's not an out and out failure, but it's it's a there there are issues, which means that it's not a it's not perfect. That means that some portion of that of that particular scenario uh did not did not work uh correctly. Uh, so that's what that means.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if you if you were, you know, you could easily count this as saying that there are nineteen failures, because the point is, is when you pass with with issues, it means you gotta fix the issues. Okay?
Uh, Chair, can you ask a question before we leave that screen?
Yes, you may. Please proceed.
So the last bullet you have, the open enrollment start date appears to be at risk. So can you play out for us what that means? What does that impact? What does it mean if we're going to be late with open enrollment? How does that affect anything else that?
Well, it 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 reduces the amount of time that you have this system open for employees to to conduct their their particular desire for open enrollment. Uh, my understanding is that the date, the promised date has been has been, you know, the employees have been notified. Um, but in terms of in terms of you know, bottom line functionality, uh, performance and so forth. At best, you know, this this at best, you know, or at worst case, we gets gets moved by by a few days.
Just. So you're at at least your estimation of risk is that we're only losing a few days of open enrollment, but it will happen and will be enough time for everyone to.
Yes, I mean, yeah, I'm just thinking that there because they started late, there's there's a strong possibility that they will finish late. Which means there's a strong possibility that they they will have to defer that open enrollment start date. But it won't be a month, it won't be significant, it'll be a few days.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about the status trends. So the overall uh status message, I think, uh, they the team has has finally published its staff at weekly status reports. They put them together in a big batch, which I believe you all received within the last few days. Um, so that was that was, you know, thirteen weeks of reports. Um, there there do continue to be verbal indications of activity, which is which is going on in the project management office and the executive steering committee. But, uh, you know, certainly there there has been very little evidence of managing against the plan and the schedule, which is considered to be a best practice for project management, but when when I looked at all of those those reports, uh, I noticed that none none of them until we got to the nine twenty-five report, none of them included the percent complete uh posted on the project plan, which they had done for years. Okay? Um, the.
If I may.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. So thirteen weeks behind, is there an intentional hole? I mean, is there, we have the week done, but we're not releasing it. We have another week done, but we're not releasing it. Or are all of these done at one time? Broken up into weekly reports and then given to us? Which way is this happening?
To the best of my knowledge, and you know, and and I can only go with what evidence I receive, you know, uh, but to the best of my knowledge, the the major contractor in for who is contracted to provide a weekly report, I mean, that's in the contract.
Right.
That and they have been, to my knowledge and my understanding, they have been doing that. It's just that the reports have been held.
They've been held.
To, you know, for to complete them, to update them, you know, whatever whatever reasons, and those are obviously things that you can you can ask the team directly. Um, but, uh, you know, I I I have been told multiple times that 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 the in for weekly reports have been published. Sometimes not perfectly on a weekly basis, but generally speaking on a weekly basis, and that they have been provided to the team. Um, and then that's where they that that's where they fell into a an inbox, I guess.
Yeah. What would be, if I if I may ask, what would be the intent of holding them? That they just weren't at a place where they wanted us to know that the activity wasn't where it should be, and they will hope the next week would be better, and let's release it then, or what is it, uh, you know?
Yeah.
The rationale?
I, you know, like I said, I think you you probably should direct that question directly to the team. Um, you know, I I I certainly have perceptions. Um, you know, that in in many cases, they're being held, and so that the team can can provide updates for its portion of of the status report. Cause there's some some of the things in the status report are county not in for. Um, and so that's the case. And then in other cases, uh, you know, you've got a moving target. Cause now you've, you know, in the last two months, you've had you've had two major rescheduling exercises regarding the the launch of payroll.
Right.
Okay, um, and so, you know, there there's the there's this consternation that gee, if we do anything in draft, you know, we get locked in and you get all this kind of thing. So that, I think, has had a tendency to kind of hold them hold them back and and as they as they do that. And the other the others probably just a matter of bandwidth. You know, does the project management team on the county side have the bandwidth? Uh, you know, uh, over the last couple of months with everything else that's going on. So that would be my perception of what some of those reasons would be, but I again, I would suggest you ask those directly of of the team.
All right, thank you.
This is a a chart that I I have used quite a bit, that you should be familiar to you, and if you recall, um, you know, the approach that I've used here is I I am repeating and reporting exactly what the arrows are that are in the weekly reports. And up until this week, when we got all the reports, I really didn't have anything to tell you beyond the weekend in six nineteen. Um, but now this is this is the this is the the catch up, if you will, of all those reports. Now, and and the the approach that I have used is when it's yellow, that means that there has been no change from the prior week. If it's green, that means there's a change from the prior week. Oh, excuse me. I'm I'm confusing the percent complete. I apologize. This is this is exactly what the team reports, and so they they report green as being no issues, everything's okay, yellow as being, uh, some issues are emerging and it might have an effect on schedule, and red is a lot of it, a lot of issues have emerged, and there is an effect on schedule. So that is their approach. Um, that the arrow, the direction of the arrows is their is their approach to what the trend is. And so, but the thing that I find surprising is that if you look at this thing and you say, oh gee, you've got thirteen weeks of uh of reports, you know, and you keep saying the change management has some has some issues emerging, it may affect the schedule. Same thing with end user training and the same thing for technology. So nothing has changed. It's the same, same trend direction, same condition. I find that somewhat surprising. Clearly, if you look at the line that talks about payroll bundle, which is payroll and WFM, it's all red and has been red, and if you and I've got this stuff going back for a a year and a half or two years now. I mean, they've known if they've known it's gonna have a schedule impact, and they've known the significant issues have have been have arisen for months now. And it's even even now, we've just replanned this project and supposedly have a detailed plan. And, you know, you look at the weekend in nine twenty-five, which was two weeks ago. It's still saying that. Okay, so my comment then at the very bottom there is with the latest reschedule, the payroll launch, the condition should change to green for the weekend in ten-two. And of course, that's the report that hasn't been published yet. It should be published every Tuesday. And it should be green. I mean, they've rescheduled this thing. I mean, it should be everything should be okay, because they know what they're doing, and they and it's laid out to their to their satisfaction. The master plan is the only place where they where they talk about the budgeting solution for Sherpa for part three. And this this piece is the piece that brings FTE and hours calculations, and it's passed to the OBM so that OBM can do the quarterly reports and tell you how how things are going with regard to staffing. I mean, that's that's the last piece of of the budgeting solution, and that continues to show no no progress, no motion. It is entirely dependent upon completing the implementation of WFM and payroll, because that's where all the hours are. Okay, and that's not in the special plan that they've generated for payroll and WFM. And in and and of course, in the in the master plan, it still shows an October conversion date or a July date, I forget which, but the point is, it's never been updated. Okay? So here's their percent complete, and if you're this is where I I use those colors, and and I I've been tracking the percent complete on a weekly basis for a year and a half now, probably. Uh, and I've been trying to show you, because if you recall, we talked about the fact that it's important you maintain pace. Well, the way you maintain pace is you show so you show an increase in in percent complete on on a periodic basis, in this case, weekly, if you get the weekly reports on the weekly timeframe. So if you look, the last weekly report that had this information in it was the the weekend in June twenty-six. And then you'll notice that everything is yellow, which means that it did not change from the prior week. And if you look at the history, you'll see that it did not change for quite a few weeks. Then we have all these catch up reports that just looked at. None of they do not include the the project plan with with updates for percent complete. But they show up in the week of nine twenty-five, so I left these blank just to make the point. So that that data is not being published and presented. But then you look at nine twenty-five, and now you'll notice that if the percent complete goes the opposite direction than it should, meaning it goes down. I I from the prior week, I I color it red. So you'll see that the bulk of these are red. So so if I look at the overall percent complete for the project, which was reported to you as ninety-one percent in twenty-six June, it's now eighty-two percent. Lots of potential reasons why that's happening. Um, notice that that we said that accounts receivable, billing and grants management and fixed assets, those were a hundred percent complete on twenty-six June. Yet somehow, somehow, on twenty-five September, they're eighty-five percent. And remember what I said earlier that that these keep these these rollouts continue to stretch out, and and as an example, we're redoing some training for accounts payable. You know, so all of a sudden, some things are not complete anymore. Procurement part two, sourcing and contracts was ninety-one percent complete, now all of a sudden it's forty-two. Payroll payroll was eighty percent complete in twenty-six June. Everybody was all excited, we're we're gonna launch in July, and there's, oh, we can't launch in July. Let's redo this plan and not and then we're going to end up with uh the staged approach, okay? And then one one month later, we we change it again, and now we're gonna have the the big bang approach and and at the end of March with first paycheck in April, and our percent complete has gone to forty percent. Okay? So, you know, are are we maintaining pace? Not really. And when you don't report everything every week like you're supposed to, and like you have been, seems to me like you you've got a lack of progress accountability. So after that thirteen week hiatus, this was in the nine twenty-five project plan. Okay, and this you'll notice that it's got those percent completes over there on the left hand side. Okay, but the thing that this is the master plan. This is not the plan that the special plan that that was presented to you Monday. This is the master plan that has always been in place, which is theoretically has everything in it, which is it's it's supposed to. But you'll number one, you'll see you will see that the WFM payroll and BFM schedule does not reflect the revised launch date. I mean, those dates in there are June. The payroll percent complete presumably reflects a significant addition addition of tasks, and it's the only reason I can think of, that you go from eighty percent to forty percent. You've added a lot of words. So there are some anomalies with regard to progress, and I looked at these. Now, the prior slide, I I talked about the anomaly of going from eighty percent to forty percent for payroll, okay? But there are other anomalies, and I wanted you to see those, all right? And then these are in the master plan. So line nineteen sixty-five, if you take a look at that, that's procurement phase two. You know, that thing launched in April, yet right now it's forty-two percent complete as of nine twenty-five. Yet yet, we said we we said it was launched. In two thousand, uh, line two thousand and nine, which is the combination of receivables, billing, grants management and fixed assets. That thing launched in June, yet now it's eighty-five percent complete. Line twenty ninety, change management. It's a it's listed as a forty day. It's a, it's listed as a forty-day effort. And it was supposed to start in March. But here, here it is, we're, we're, we're at nine twenty-five. It's only fourteen percent complete after a hundred days. And this is why I keep worrying about the master plan. There are pieces here that go beyond the payroll implementation. Line twenty-one oh four, post-go-life support and acceptance, a thirty-day effort. I've got a typo there, I apologize. That should have been completed right after the latest launch, but does not appear to have even started and has, has not been rescheduled. So line twenty-one oh four, post-go-life support for all of those modules up above. You can see it was scheduled to start in April, which is correct. I mean, if, if, if procurement launched in April, then post-go-life support would start right afterward. And it would take thirty days and end in, in June one. Well, it, it's zero percent complete. So no post-go-life support, at least that's the way I read it. No post-go-life support has been conducted for procurement and receivables, billing, grants management and fixed assets. All right, do you have any questions? Okay. So let's talk about this new payroll deployment approach. I, the, the thing that, that struck me is, is an anomaly. Is, you know, I'm looking at this master plan now from nine, nine twenty-five, nine twenty-five. And it says, and it says, you know, we're, we're eighty-one, no, excuse me. On six nineteen, we, we said it was nine, ninety-one percent complete. And you'll notice that that's the same overall that was presented to you on month, uh, on, in the last briefing. Okay. And, you know, and I've already, I'm not just kind of repeating some of these things where, where it, it doesn't, doesn't make sense that we, we don't, we don't have this rescheduled. We don't have the master plan updated. So what, what are the changes? You know, once, once the team, uh, realized that they couldn't launch as planned in July, which we talked about, it took them two minutes, two months to finalize an approach, which said, let's stage it into five groups and, and spread the employees out and it's gonna be spread out over a six-month period. Including with the first pay in April. And I say six months because the first one was supposed to be in October and then the last one is at the end of March. Um, now, one month after they did all this, there's a lot of consternation. The team was very nervous. Everybody was coming to the conclusion that they wouldn't be able to launch payroll in October, the first one. So they changed the approach again. And so now the targeting, the first pay in April, and in essence, they're combining all the groups and they're doing them all in ones, which I'm referring to as the big bang approach. The team did generate and has generated a detailed plan for rolling out payroll and WFM. Now, but that's the rest of the master plan that we have talked about is not really, this has not been folded into the rest of the master plan. And that's, that's concerning. The other thing that's concerning, when I look at this plan, you, you gotta be a person who uses Microsoft Project to recognize this. But you see all the question marks in the duration column? That means that, you know, that there are subtasks or activities that have been rolled up into the line item. And that at least one of those line items is using the default. When it uses a default, that means that somebody did not put a duration in there. And what it does is it defaults to one day. So it's incomplete. And that you can see that's all the way down the line. Right? And then we'll notice in line sixty-two, run books and process books.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, uh, please proceed.
On that previous point, you said it defaults to one day. When you, but you also indicated that there are sub items within the, um, within the text. So can you can you give me an example? Let's say the, the very, um,
Well, go down here.
Let's go to data storage. Data storage, it has twenty days and a question mark. So you're saying there's a sub item in data storage?
Sure. If you look at, if you look at the line item for data storage, it's sixty-eight. Then right below it, you see the line item for data conversion is seventy-nine. There are eleven line items between the two. And, and what has happened is they are, they are summarized into the data storage line. If you go down to line two oh four, it says per, first payroll date. And then two oh five is WFM cutover and go live. Those are subsidiary tasks. If, if they, if someone wanted to summarize this, they would simply click on, on that, on that first payroll date. And it would, it would summarize all of the, all of this information down below. You can, you can see that twenty-seven days is actually a summarization of those days down below. Eleven, two, twelve, five, they, they come out to twenty-seven days.
Got it.
Okay, same thing is happening up above. You just don't see it. And I don't know who, at, at what, I don't have the detail. I don't know what, what's underneath it. And I don't know which one is, is, is defaulting. It could be all of them and there could be just a single line that has the twenty, like data storage. There may be a single line underneath that says data storage is twenty, twenty days. And then the other tasks are defaulting to one.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, yes, it's good that there's a plan. Yes, the plan you'll see on the high level is, is telling you that first check is gonna come out down the very bottom right-hand corner, Monday on, Monday, four or five. Although I'm, I'm, I thought everybody was paid on Fridays. So I'm, I'm surprised by that. I thought that should be four, four-three. But be that as it may, that's, that's when the first check is being targeted. You can also see up, up above, when does F, when does FM cutover? When does F go live? So you, you're gonna start collecting time on March the fourteenth. Okay?
Uh, Chair, let me ask a question on that before we leave it.
Yes, you may.
So it looks like the end date of four, five, twenty-one is consistent. But they, everything above it is tightened. Everything is, is, is becoming tighter in accomplishments. But the end date is always the same. Do you think that what they've outlined here in preparing these different stages to ultimately reach payroll is realistic?
Well, it, it, it's hard, it, it's hard for me to, to determine if it's realistic, if, if the details are using defaults of one day. Because that, that makes it difficult to find out whether or not you may have, you may have a, a situation where you require more time and you, you've assumed, you've assumed a one-day duration and maybe it's a week. And that could, that could affect you. Especially on dependent, you know, when you have a dependent task. I don't know. Um, but, but, uh, you know, and the, and that's why earlier I was telling you that when you look at this parallel testing, you know, they've set aside basically a hundred and twenty days. And at the same time, they're talking about user acceptance testing for WFM. That is, you know, uh, you know, certainly a, a reasonable and adequate block of time. But the question is, what's underneath it? And are there some things under there that might require more time? Which is why I said earlier that we need to make sure we monitor the start and stop dates of each iteration of testing carefully and diligently. You know, because that's, that's where this thing can slip. It's when you get into testing and all of a sudden you get into the circle, the circle of gee, I made a mistake, it failed, I've gotta go fix it. And then, and, you know, how many times are you gonna go through that? Um, and so, and, and WFM continues to be the area where you have two thousand work rules. I mean, you've got thirty-two unions. Uh, you know, you, 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 all these complexities are there. And user acceptance testing is kind of like the last, the last gasp. I mean, that's the last moment when, when you are saying, okay, we've done everything else, done the integration testing. Now, now we're gonna sit there and we're gonna have people work through that on a user basis and, and accept it. And that's where you find the odd, the oddities are usually come out of user acceptance testing, the exception.
And I, and I would think that the project manager has that knowledge to know that these are the hot points. These are the, you know, the benchmarks that we need to make sure are done by this date, just for the reasons you said. Is there any, um, thought of that not being taken seriously or not have full understanding that those are?
I, I think project leadership is well aware of, of the, the places where this can get, get you into trouble. Uh, absolutely, I think they do. Um, and, you know, I, I think that there's, there's been a lot of work on their part to, to get at the detail planning that's associated with this. I just simply don't see it. I don't, I'm not privy to it at this point. You know, I mean, obviously I'll continue asking for that, but right now this stuff is, is draft. Um, and then, you know, of course, there's more detailed work that needs to be done in terms of planning it out. But I, I'm very confident that they understand the risks and exposure that all of this represents.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, so, you, you, are you up here, um, let me at least over here on line, uh, one seventeen, you'll notice that they've got basically a hundred and twenty days allocated to parallel testing. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that, that the, the parallel testing is kind of, is different. And the, the cartoon I've got up here is, is, is trying to show you what could hap- what could happen if you, if you don't, if you don't really apply a great reasoned and random statistical sampling approach to doing this. And so so first of all, I want to repeat, this is what the project team presented to you. Um, and, you know, I just wanted to highlight that, that and I, and I even talked about this, I think, in, in, in the session Friday, which was, we got these groups, which is the ori- this is the original approach from two months ago of staging the rollout of payroll. Okay, and the, the first group, if you recall, was, was the group that does not use WFM. And the other, and then the other groups were, you know, grouped according to, you know, the complexity of their, uh, in the difficulties of their contracting and all that kind of thing. Uh, so, so they had, and they had all these groups laid out. And then, then, but then they said the revised approach is we're gonna have, you'll notice it, the number two here, it says group two, WFM payroll, parallel workshops. So you, so you got these workshops and, you know, but what they're talk, you know, what, what we need to make sure we understood is, is that they're using the term parallel for testing purposes and it's not gonna be truly parallel anymore. Okay? So that they're, they're talking about, they want a minimum of two iterations and they're going to be, I refer to as wound to tomb. So that's collect time all the way out to get a check to the bank, the ACH transfer to the bank. Um, so so they, they've, they've got these groups identified, but we need to make sure we realize that it's not gonna be every employee when we start doing the testing. Okay, the other thing that I think we need to recognize, and this was again, the representation that team presented to you, and they said, these are the things that are left to do. And my, my point is that this is the reason why they've gotta go wound to tomb. This is the reason why they've gotta go all the way back to time clocks, because you'll notice that that stuff is over here with the Xs, that's still left to do. Okay, reporting is still left to do. You gotta test those. And we also, ACH payments, we gotta test that interface and get it, you know, make sure it's gonna go to the banks correctly. Okay, so these are all pieces that are going to be included in the, the beginning to end or wound to tomb testing cycles that they will be doing shortly. So, so this is basically restating that. What does that mean? And the team will now include the capture of time and the external interfaces and new reporting as part of the payroll testing process, rather than what had been done before, which was extracting pay data for all employees from the legacy system and doing the comparison. Okay? So, so testing all employees, if you go, go through this wound-to-tomb approach, if you try to test all employees, that will be probably too cumbersome, too costly and too time-consuming. Now, one hundred and twenty days probably is quite low. Okay? So they, they've identified the fact that they need to do a subgroup of employees which, with which I, I concur. Uh, and they've also indicated that, that, that they will use different employees for each testing iteration, which is also makes sense. But they won't do more than three iterations or they want a minimum of two. What is not clear is how they're gonna select the employees. Okay, and my great fear would be that you take a simplistic approach and say, well, we'll just take every tenth employee. And that simplistic approach does not reflect the entire population. It is not statistically sound. So w- we're urging the team to apply statistical sampling. Okay? Because you want the team to be able to provide assurances that the testing approach is a viable alternative to one hundred percent parallel. All right? That you're sure, those assurances can be provided if they apply statistical sampling properly in the employee selection process. So what we're suggesting that the team uses a stratified random sampling approach. That will allow the team to stratify into groupings. They've already got that. And, you know, they can make adjustments to them, but they're, they're pretty close. Um, and that way you're addressing all employee categories, because you have to make sure you address all employee categories. And then you need to make sure that you have select employees randomly from each stratification. You can't go just every tenth employee. You gotta do it randomly. Which means the generation of a random number generator and so forth. The number of employees selected must be driven by the desired degree of confidence in the range of acceptable error. And you've seen these, you know, on all the various polls and so forth. So, and, and the, the degree of confidence will, will, it will affect the size of the sample. So if you, so, and, and needless to say, if you go to ninety-nine point nine percent confidence, you're gonna have a larger sample than if you have a ninety-five percent confidence level. All right? Any questions on that?
If I could ask on page twenty-one, I'm just curious, um, how can we have an X? And I didn't catch this before when I saw the screen, but the WFM time clock and galaxy are Xs along with the workforce management time entry. But then we have a check mark next to WFM hours interface. How can we have Xs going in with a check mark at the end?
Okay. Best I can, best I can, um, address that is that the che- they have tested the passage of punched hours from the time clocks to workforce management. What they have not tested is they've not tested the hours necessary to be entered into a time clock to match an employee's paycheck.
So is that fair to say that that check mark is correct in the hours interfaced if?
Yeah, yeah, because they, they've tested, they've tested the process of passing the data to workforce management.
Okay.
That they've tested. What they haven't tested is saying I've got employee X and the employee X, uh, you know, in the, in, in the real, real world and was paid a thousand dollars.
Right.
And employee X reported a thousand hours, let's say for discussion purposes, they get paid a dollar an hour. So you gotta put in a thousand hours and pass that to WFM. And WFM has to summarize and categorize it and pass it on to payroll so that it can pay it.
Right, I see.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about money.
This is the Before you move on to money.
Sure.
When you're talking about parallel testing, uh, am I right that what you're testing is whether the financial data that's generated by the old system is the same day, the, the same result that comes from the new system?
Yes. But, but, but the other thing that parallel typically refers to is that you're doing it for everybody.
Understood.
Okay. So, but yes, so this, this approach, this approach will still be parallel in concept. Because you're gonna be taking, you're gonna be taking an existing employee's paycheck. And you're gonna be looking at how many hours that employee reported. And then you're gonna repeat that in the new system. You're gonna have the hours go in and you're gonna see if that check comes out to be the same as what you, what you expected from before. So you're still doing it, it's just you're doing it for a, a smaller set of people.
And am I
Do you a hundred percent sure that they will not be breaching into anyone's account with this, that this is truly in a data?
with this, that this is truly in a data, uh, centric uh, location and is not any way possible of getting into live data?
Well, they, they, they're using, they're, they're using a copy or a download or an extract of live data. Sure.
No, I got that.
Yeah.
Any possibility they're getting into people's uh, bank accounts that they also have that same transfer and transitional strategy that goes into activating those live data deposits?
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know how, I don't know how far they're going to go in terms of the deposit. Okay, in other words, I, you know, they, they, they probably, it's probably adequate for them to basically run the system and have and have the ACH transactions come out. And remember, it's not for everybody, it's just for a sample. A hundred people or a hundred and fifty people or whatever that sample is size is. And it's just going to be the transaction file, and they're going to be able to look at that. I don't think they're going to go all the way to the bank. But they, they may, if they go to the bank, and if they go to the bank, then the bank needs to have a, a test environment set up.
That's why a lot of firms do a one dollar deposit, so that they can actually take it all the way to the bank, so that no one has to worry about that.
Yep, I, I, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
So, Zig, am I correct that when they do the, the parallel testing, that there cannot be any discrepancy? There cannot be any discrepancies? Because we don't, we don't want to even have a quarter of a percentage point of the employees get, get the wrong pay amount.
If that, that depends entirely on the extent of any known differences. And we've talked about this before. You know, that, you know, are, to the extent that there are known differences, in other words, something has changed that they know about could conceivably affect someone's paycheck. One example would be, and I'm, and I can't, and I'm not going to say that this is actually the case, but this is an example. If, if an organization were to change the timing of when it takes out deductions. All right, if you do it each paycheck, that's one approach, or you do it monthly. So if, if you, if you are currently doing it each paycheck and you change that to doing it monthly, then clearly the check is going to be different. And that's a, that's an example of a known difference.
So are you saying that they would do it one way under the old system and a different way under the new system?
If that's the way, if that's a design, if someone were to make that decision who, uh, two years ago, said, hey, we're going to, we're going to change the way, the timing of when we take out deductions, then you're going to have a known difference, and you, but you, but you can explain it.
So what you're saying is that we can't have any discrepancies that we don't know about?
You should not, that is correct.
Okay. And then want to, and they want to, and they're going to try to figure out what's a large enough sample size so that if they do this sample and there's no discrepancies that they, that they don't know about, that they're confident at a, at a pretty high level, whether it's ninety nine percent or ninety nine point five, that they're pretty confident that there aren't any discrepancies in the whole system.
Correct. That's the whole idea. But, but again, I don't know, I have been asking for the team to tell us if there are any known differences, and you know, that's, that continues to be something that doesn't, doesn't get addressed, so. I mean, if, if, if the team doesn't come up with known differences, then there's a, then there's got to be a presumption that, well, I guess there aren't supposed to, there aren't any known differences. I mean, another example I had from a prior client, which is one of the reasons why I believe in this womb to tomb business, is the client got new time clocks. When they got new time clocks, they changed the rounding rules of hours in the time clock. They changed the rounding rules. When you change the rounding rules, you can have an impact on someone's hours. Not a lot, but some, and all it takes is, you know, a one quarter hour difference, and some people get pretty upset if all of a sudden they didn't get that quarter hour. And of course, that affects their pay.
Understood.
So, known differences, you know, it's important that the team at least publish it, and if they don't have any, they should say so.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay, this is, this is the, um, the team's forecast, and this is what they presented on ten four. And, you know, and basically they're just saying, okay, here, we forecasted at the end of, uh, July, we forecasted we were going to spend thirty three point eight million. Uh, end of August, the forecast that we're going to spend thirty four point one six eight. And then, uh, on September thirtieth, as of September thirtieth, the estimates, uh, were thirty four point five million rounding. So, the thing, and then the major changes, the major change in here was estimated change orders. And you saw those, and those were basically the in four with, you know, some, some reductions for third stripe, you know, for a two hundred and forty three thousand dollar estimate. I think the thing that we need to recognize is that, you know, the total forecasted budget position, that's, that's that line that I just read you, has increased six hundred and eighty four thousand dollars from the end of July to the end of September. And over one third of it was from increased in, in for time and material services, and that's the approach that if you'll recall, Jack was telling you that, you know, for additional work, r- rather than focusing on the fixed fee aspect, that they're literally going with time and materials for in-force services to help with the, with, with the payroll launch. The county staff line item, okay, which is six hundred, six hundred and sixty thousand, and, and then it continues to kind of change, and now it's, the last one was one thirty seven. It does, the thing we need to understand is at the time of this thing being presented, it didn't include twenty twenty actuals or a forecast for the balance of twenty and twenty twenty one. So we need to recognize that there's still more to come as, as internal people work on this project for the next six months, uh, as well as going beyond. If you'll notice that up at the top of the columns, they all say March twenty twenty one. I think there's going to be some spending goes beyond March, simply because your first paycheck is in April. Okay, and then, and there's nothing in here about BFM. Because there's presumably, there's going to be work after, after the first paycheck uh, for BFM to finish and, and to, and to do Postco life support.
So Zig, are you saying that their accounting of county employee hours worked on the project only includes hours that, uh, that have already been accomplished? And, and that the, uh, the forecast spending does not include county employee hours that are going to be spent between now and the end of April, nor, nor does it include hours that might be spent a little bit after the month.
Yeah, that, that is my understanding, that that's not been i- included in the forecast.
Okay, thank you.
Should be.
Right, it should be, agree.
I mean, the, the analysis, the analysis that was provided by OBM is historical. I mean, it's, it's what, it's actuals. And the, and OBM, and OBM doesn't project numbers. I mean, that's not their job, I mean, for this project. Here's the other chart that the, that the team pres- presented to you, and, 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 um, you know, I, I kind of looked at it and added the last line item instead of, you know, because the way it's presented to you is the, the total is at the very bottom of the page, and, and it seemed to me like it made, from the point of view of looking at this thing, let's move it up here to the top. So basically, what you see there is estimated costs, and they're as of the, the last six months. You can see beginning March thirty one, these are all the numbers and to- total costs in the various categories. And then you can see that for each month thereafter, there are some changes. I put a big X in the middle four columns because they simply don't change. They haven't changed in six months. But consulting services has changed a little bit. Backfill support has changed a little bit from month to month. Permanent staffing has changed. And your, your total has changed. What I did then is I added the column over on the right-hand side, which is the monthly change. And you'll see that from March to April, the projected total dropped to a rounding, two and a half million dollars. But then we turn right around and it starts increasing. So from April to June, we added nine hundred and forty one thousand dollars. From, from June to July, a hundred and eight, then a hundred and ninety five, and then, and then in the last period from August to September thirtieth, we added three hundred and sixty, eighty thousand dollars. Now again, I'm just using their numbers, okay? But I've got this arrow here to say, well, what does this mean over the, over the last four months? From June through September, if you, if you average those out, if you average those out, we're increasing about four hundred thousand dollars a month in terms of projected total spend. If I were to, if I were to assume that that's high, that gee, it should be tailing off. And if I were to say, well, okay, maybe we won't be averaging four hundred thousand for the remaining months of the project, let's see, let's just assume we, we average two hundred thousand. The problem I have with that is that you've only got eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars left in the appropriation. You see that? Your appropriated funds are thirty five point three. The remaining balance, you subtract it, you, you know, from, from the appropriation, you subtract the thirty four point five, and you get eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If the monthly increase is two hundred thousand dollars a month, which is fifty percent of what the trend has been, or the average, not the trend, but the fifty percent of the, of the average, it's going to, you know, I'm, we're going to eat up the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars in four months. That sounds like we're going to run out of money in February. Now, that's making an assumption that there's going to continue to be some increases. But if you recall, I've already suggested that if we're only estimating through the end of March, I think there's for sure some additional charges because your first paycheck is out there in April. Finishing up BFM is out there in April, uh, Postco life support is out there in April. You know, so, so there's, needs to be some estimate for that or some, some charge. If it's already included, you know, if somebody can sit there and say, well, some of it's already included because of the fixed fee aspect of our contract, then so be it.
And also you have, have those, uh, county employee staff costs that you think are, uh,
Are not included in the projections, correct.
Only on a historical basis, but not, uh, not for between now and April.
And, you know, the thing we need to recognize is that that all of this testing, it's going to go on payroll, it's going to require a lot of county time. So, so I guess what I'm suggesting is that we may have a budget busting trend here. And, and, and this basically in words tells you all the things that I just described for you. So the, 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 the bottom line there is the troubling trend virtually assures that there will be no funding for phase two. Okay?
Uh Chair, if I may ask, there'll be no funding for phase two, but there may not even be enough funding for fa- to finish phase one.
They, this team certainly should, should present to you its projections with, with clarity to make sure that, that, uh, that we, they don't run out, they don't run out of funding. Okay?
All right, wow.
For the capital project. Now, we, we recognize that, you know, the whole business of when you start talking about internal charges, I mean, everybody takes the position that, well, it's money already spent. It's either it's operating or it's not operating, you know, I'm looking at this strictly from the budget of the capital project. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I do think that they, they need to address that very clearly. And I, this is a reminder that I keep bringing up, but I think it's important, all of these dollars and everything that the team is doing and has been doing, and everything they talked to you about over the last six months is about phase one and phase one only. So thus, the implementation of the remaining modules, and there's about five of them, comprise expense management, total rewards, and talent management appear to be unfunded other than the assumption that the balance of the appropriation after all spending on phase one will be applied to phase two. But I've just told you, I think they're going to run out. So I don't think there's going to be any funding for phase two, which means that, you know, somebody's got to come up with a plan to say, and, and a request for funding to put in expense management, total rewards, and talent management. Now, talent management is a lot of soft HR stuff. Goals management, employee goals management, employee performance management, uh, succession planning. I mean, it's a lot of soft stuff. Okay, total rewards is all about, you know, how do I tell employees what the total value of benefits and salary has been to them o- over the year? Okay, very valid, very useful component. Expense management is type, is, is a expense report. Okay?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Gallagher.
Zig, uh, to be clear, in your terminology, is potential budget busters. This is potential budget, budget busters. They've already busted the original bu- budget, and now we've extended less my vote for more money, and now they're going to potentially, and let's face it, probably bust this budget, correct?
There's no question that, uh, you know, there, if they, if they do all of these things that we just talked about here in phase two, plus some other things, um, you know, they originally gave you a broad estimate of one to two million dollars about six months ago. Yep.
So, so I think going forward, we could call this the double budget buster program.
Yeah, good.
And, and I can tell you, I'm not smiling, but it is what it is, gang.
Okay, shall I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the other thing that, uh, you know, I, you know, and I've continued to take this position, and I just want to remind everybody, because when we start comparing and the team does these comparisons, and they, they're, I don't agree with their comparisons, because, you know, I, 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 I am comparing the, the EAC, which is the estimate at completion, to the original budget. Okay, and the first of all, we need to recognize that the original budget is twenty one million dollars. It's not twenty five, that's the original appropriation. But the original budget for the project was twenty one million dollars, with a four million dollar, and it was presented as a contingency. It is not viewed now in their, in their spreadsheets as a contingency, but that's the way it was presented three years ago. Okay? And the other thing we need to recognize is the, everything that the team is presenting to you right now, the estimate at completion does not include an estimate for phase two. All right? And here's, here's the statement where I want to remind you, you know, if, I think it was one to two, or maybe two to three, but the point is, it's, it's, it's significant, and it's, it's more than whatever the balance is in the appropriation today. If you assume a two point five million dollar estimate, the overall estimate at completion for phases one and two would be thirty six point five million, which is the current phase estimate at completion of thirty four, plus the two point five. So for, for achieving the full ERP implementation, which is what you signed off on four years ago, five years ago, is looking like it's about thirty six point five million. Now, if you compare the current estimate at completion to the budget, that would be a hundred and seventy four percent, which means you're almost doubling the original budget of twenty one million. As opposed to using the original appropriation of twenty five million, which included that contingency. So, right now, if you look at thirty six point five million, you, you're looking at a hundred and seventy four percent, um, twenty one million. Let's talk a little bit about project governance. This is all about the new approach for governance, um, that, um, the team has presented to the executive steering committee, and they, they, they briefed you on it, which is they, they want to do some planning, and they need to prior, prioritize what they're doing in terms of resource needs and stuff like that, and they, and they want the resource needs and stuff like that, and they and they want the executive steering committee to 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 play in that space. Um, I am just concerned, and I'm suggesting that the new more formal process, you know, is it only so associated with the capital project, or is it part of the DOIT operating environment? I think the answer is it's part of the overall DOIT operating environment. And they, you know, they the team talks about immediate prioritization issues, and the question is, are these the phase two issues? Because I would think that's what should be in in the prioritization list. And then are and then they 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 talk about requested ERP enhancements. And and again, the question is, are those part of the project phase two enhancements, or are they part of a DOIT operational support? That that's that those three items are simply not clear. They have established a SharePoint site for the ESC prioritization items. You can see this long list of all the documentation that's out there. Uh, and then down at the bottom is the is the prioritization item, and then what I tried to show you here is the example of a of a of a detail. My concern here is that you know, the first of all, the preliminary list is not yet issued. Um, the prioritization criteria has not been clarified. And then then the example that they have in here is a very granular functional kind of a enhancement or change to the 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 financial system strikes me is that's way below the noise level of the executive steering committee. Because if you start doing things at this level, what happens is your your prioritization list becomes a hundred. And it becomes unwieldy.
Yeah.
So I do think it's time, you know, now that you now that the team is going down this path of we're gonna get the ESC to help us prioritize, we need to pay attention to phase two components for for sure. And the last time the team briefed you on phase two was October of twenty nineteen. I think they ought to formally consider a phase two components as part of their process. And that's where they need to be paying attention and get the ESC to buy into do or don't we do this? And this is gonna include the kinds of things that, you know, we've already talked about several times. Here, here are the the various talent management components. But the thing that is falling between the cracks that people tend to overlook is that we've got a whole slew of enterprise asset management components that the county owns, part of the one point five million dollar license fee. And, you know, what's the prioritization of getting that stuff in uh in implemented? But those are those the kinds of things I think they should be looking at. The other things that they should be looking at, you know, we talked about this in October, which is, you know, what, you know, and this has been mentioned a few times. What about the N four, you know, version upgrade for Lawson? What about data analytics? Um, you know, to what extent should we be looking at non-executive agencies replacing their ERP? And then how do we move forward with the data lake data repository? Those are all big ticket items in my mind. But because they all are gonna require big resources, lots of resources, not only personnel, but dollars, of course, the ESC should be prioritizing these and laying them out, and so so a team can generate the appropriate capital plan um going forward. So these, I'm I'm just repeating, I think, you know, with this page. Um, and we gotta recognize that there's some fuzzy rollouts are going on, you know? We've got, you know, for fiscal, we've we've got a lot of agencies are submitting spreadsheets, and we need to get that straightened out so they can start using the system and the I think those things are going on, but it 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 became very un unclear as to is this is this part of phase two? Is this part of the capital project? Is this really part of DOIT operations? Those continue to be fuzzy. So in conclusion, open enrollment may be delayed up to a week. We've talked about that, okay? So that I just want to make sure we're we're repeating that. Uh, the Big Bang approach, I think you certainly I'm 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 okay with the fact that they they the the entire team has worked together to get this thing to get committed to this latest revision, so that's a positive. Um, however, I think success will hinge on successfully compete completing two wounded tomb testing iterations. Minimum of two. Okay, successful hinge on successfully applying appropriate statistical sampling to randomly selecting a reduced set of employees for testing. And then we gotta be recognize that there's some additional costs out there beyond the end of March. So spending outlook, um, as much as work expands to meet the time available, organizations tend to spend the funds available. I mean, I I'm fairly comfortable, the you the team is probably gonna absorb the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar balance that's sitting out there in the appropriation. That's probably gonna happen. Um, the monthly spending increase the last three months suggests that all of the appropriation balance will be absorbed in the coming months, thus leaving no funding for phase two. And that was my conversation about an average of four hundred in the last four months. Cut it in half, get two hundred thousand. If that trend continues, you know, obviously we use up the eight seventy. The last monthly report, we had several questions that you had asked the team to to address. These are the questions that you asked them to address. The first two, the team has done. Last three, they really haven't. So the team was supposed to provide a full implementation schedule that includes phase two and its current thinking as to when, if, and how we plan to deal with version eleven. That has not occurred. Project team will identify changes to the capital plan. The administration will submit as a result of ongoing work, the ERP project. That has not occurred. Project team to it needs to provide an estimated cost for phase two of the project by major component of consultant charges, DOIT charges, software, hardware, backfill, and so on. That has not occurred. So those three are basically questions that I think you probably would want to repeat and pass on to the administration. And that on that note, I am finished.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that report. And speaking of the administration, Jack Ryan has requested the opportunity to respond to a few of the things that have been said here today. Jack, are you on the call? Is Jack with us?
See him, Dale, but I don't hear him.
Uh, could somebody text him, see if maybe he's on mute?
Chairman, I'll I'll text him. This is Andy Moles. I'll text him.
Thank you.
Zig, while we're waiting, Zig goes of those three items that you had listed as not being done. Are they going to impact the actual ending dates of any of the dates we've been giving you, believe?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
And Zig, while we're waiting, I know there was conversation not long ago when we were what they used to call de-scoping. And we were de-scoping from phase one and expanding into phase two. And there was conversation that our existing employees would be gradually learning and being more efficient and being able to let go some of the outside consultants that we were bringing in um to help us through this process, and that in itself would be a savings of dollars by the time we got to phase two. Is that hold any weight anymore, or are we finding that's just been too long of a learning curve?
Yeah, I I think that the 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 team will 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 definitely be able to do more uh more of the implementation work uh without having to contract with INFOR, which is the high dollar contracting.
Right.
Um, now, they may end up, they may end up using some ten ninety nine contractors. Um, and they definitely are are trying to get internal personnel pretty well positioned to to do a lot of that work. So I think that's that's a positive.
And it's kind of positive enough to alleviate the dollars it's gonna take to finish phase one and alleviate the concern that it's gonna take to get into phase two and complete it. I mean, it was part of the strategy of de-scoping, I believe, at the time that we were told that they can't get it all done in one phase.
Yeah, the the de-scoping is is strictly a contract term to to satisfy INFOR. I mean, so basically, they're saying they're they were pulled those things out of INFOR scope. I mean, that's that's what that was all about. Um, so, uh, but but in terms of uh getting the work done and 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 the the effect on whether or not you can finish phase two, if you do all of phase two, can you do it for eight hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars? Well, that depends on whether or not the team can literally not increase its expected estimate to complete at all between now and April. Uh, I mean, so so and I the the trend is that that's not the case, that they're and not only that, you you've got INFOR in a time materials contract, so to do to do work. So if they add more hours and more time, you know, those dollars will go up. Um, and they do need to have INFOR's expertise. Um, and you know, that's that that's clear. So in terms of finishing the payroll and WFM, they need to have Sherpa people, I mean, so so those things, I think, are are given. Uh, so, uh, you know, a- again, I don't, I can't, I can't project, or I don't know anything more than than are they gonna spend more money than what they have said? I'm pretty sure that'll probably happen. Will it be as much as eight hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars? I don't know. That's that's up to what they can work out and and so forth. So, um, but even even if they don't spend anymore, and you're you've got, you're left with eight hundred and seventy nine available in the appropriation, question then comes, well, how much are you gonna do in phase two, if any? And um, and then, uh, you know, how are you gonna staff getting that done? I mean, if you if you have a resource shortage, and you gotta go out and get additional resources, you're gonna end up paying ten ninety nines. Um, if even if you don't hire INFOR to do expense management and the others, uh, you you still probably end up using ten ninety nines just because you need more bodies.
All right, thank you, Zig. Jack is is here with us.
Mister Chair, this, may I interrupt, please? I'm sorry. Um, this is Clerk Schmatzer. I would just like to recognize for the audio record that Ms. Simon has been in attendance for quite some time during this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, and
Chairman, this is Ryan. I am online.
Ryan, available. Uh, please proceed.
I I am available. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Um, appreciate the opportunity to just clarify some questions here that I I had a technical problem and had to move to Andy's office, so even though it says Andy Moles, I probably don't look anything like Andy Moles, so I'm I'm in his space, so. So then, I guess the first thing is, uh, on open enrollment, uh, the very, the very first thing I want to mention here, there's no intent to go past our schedule on open enrollment. Uh, is there some risk involved? Because we had some delays in starting testing for day and a half, uh, or, you know, two days over the weekend here while we were making some adjustments, sure. Uh, is the team committed to working uh, whatever we need to work uh with HR and IT combined, absolutely. So I we're not predicting a week delay in open enrollment. I want to be clear about that. I said that in my brief uh earlier this week. I want to be clear about that now, okay? Um, the uh, I I guess the other thing is, uh, I've just started going through a list of questions that seem to be open here. Uh, Zig mentioned, uh, the so-called quote unquote, where's my stuff tools? I know I briefed the uh some some members of council here on that. Uh, those tools are out there, they're available. In fact, we're expanding uh kind of that concept to a couple different areas, but if uh, right now, there's tools out there uh for people to use for uh, uh, inquiring about the status of a requisition, inquiring about the status of a purchase order, inquiring about the status of a contract. Uh, and so you can see exactly what cues those things are in and who has them and how long they've been there. Uh, we just finished about an hour and a half uh meeting with the uh any administration here on procurement today. Uh, talking about in additional ways, we can not only use those tools, but other ways to to take what we have implemented in INFOR and and get more efficient in our procurement process. So that that's ongoing. Those things are out there. They're not just uh things on the drawing board. They're done. Okay? Uh, the uh, uh, I guess the the other question here on open enrollment, or taking these in order that they came here, uh, failed test cases passed with issue. Uh, first of all, the information that was at the ESC was, as Zig had indicated, to clarify, uh, was with, uh, that was very preliminary. And uh, they had just started that testing. We're about twenty five percent through the testing. Uh, the failed with issues means that it's cosmetic and does not have to be. It doesn't mean failed completely. It means there's some cosmetic things that we would probably like to correct, but they are not showstoppers, and they will not stop open enrollment. Okay? At this point in time, we have, I think, one ticket that we're concerned about, uh, that we've registered within for an open enrollment. And uh, we expect that to get resolved. So we don't have eighteen failed cases, I think was whatever the the total was that was shown out there. That's gonna stop open enrollment. I I just want to be clear that we're not walking away with that perception. Of the all the slides related to the project plan here. I'll own responsibility for this, but I want to be clear about this. So the nine twenty five slides on on the project plan, that nine twenty five draft was never intended to be made public. Uh, it was an interim product. Uh, it it shows, and it erroneously shows that we haven't closed out grants management, accounts receivable, billing, uh, and some other things. Everything that was in that bundle for April has been closed. It's done, it's contract delivered. Okay? Uh, and I showed you a slide that showed all those things in green. I was quite proud of the fact that it was all green. As a matter of fact, when I when I briefed the smaller subset of this committee. That's still true. That didn't change, and those percentages are erroneous. Uh, those things are done and closed. What is in process is the leveraging of those modules capabilities to roll them out to other non-executive agencies. That is in process. That's a separate, that's separate from the INFOR deliverables. That was separate from phase one. That was originally slated for phase two to start after the beginning of the year. In fact, we're doing that a little ahead of schedule. And I think I've mentioned that to several members here, so I just want to be clear about that. So those things that that in that phase are done. Uh, that project schedule was a a draft that that was never made uh supposed to be made public here. It was just something I shared with Zig that we were working through at the time. Okay? Um, definition of parallels and and for parallel testing for uh, and and how we're approaching parallel testing. It is true that we're changing our parallel testing approach. It is true that we're gonna take a sample of the employees and use that uh to validate payroll. Uh, what is different is statistical sampling versus versus known entity kinds of sampling. There's a couple of different approaches on how to select the subset. Uh, what uh, what I have not had an opportunity to communicate to Zig and the rest of the team was we do have an agreement with the with fiscal and HR on exactly how to select and what percentage of of the population to select for our parallel testing. It's gonna be a significant percentage. Uh, you know, probably approaching fifty percent. And so statistical sampling becomes less of an issue if you if you if you, for example, uh, test forty or fifty percent of the population. And how we select that forty or fifty percent of the population uh is something we are working through with the team. Uh, we need to do this based on the knowledge of the population, not on a pure statistical sample. However, we we know which areas are more complex and which ones are not. I'm relying on the team, uh, the combined team of fiscal, HR, and IT to come up with that, you know, that proper sample to make sure that we cover all of the all of the cases. So there's a lot of thought that's gone into that. I want to be clear that that it's certainly not being I want to be clear that, that it's certainly not being taken lightly. And, and that there is some science that's being put into how we, how we do that. Okay? The, I guess the, the budgeting solution does depend upon the completion of WFM, not payroll as much. And what, what will happen for the budgeting solution? We've discussed this with OBM is that there's two pieces to the budgeting solution that we will, that, that'll be implemented. Number one, as soon as payroll goes live, the, the hours and the dollars that were, that are needed for OBM to do at least their most basic kinds of reporting and analysis will come through general ledger, actually not WFM. So those are the summary related hours that come through is kind of what you might refer to from an accounting perspective as statistical accounts. That means not just the dollars, but some other unit of measure associated with that, in this case hours. So that, that has already been looked at and, and we've tested that and we'll test it some more with OBM, but that's, that, that's how we get the most basic information. The detailed labor distribution information does come from workforce management and that will take a relatively short period of time to implement once WFM is live and we have actual hours coming across. So that has been looked at, has been considered. It wasn't listed in the project plan extract that you saw earlier from both myself and Zig, but it's, it is not something we have ignored. The, I guess the, the other thing is the, the chart with the X's on it here and the conversation around workforce management and Galaxy. I, I heard that question. The, the, the answer was correct. We have tested the interface between workforce management and the ability to deliver hours into S3. That's been tested and we know that that works. The X related to the Galaxy section of that was simply that the Galaxy system, the same system that everyone on this call uses to badge in and out of buildings. And it's used throughout the county in various areas. That Galaxy system itself has to be upgraded and then the interface implemented. That, that project is underway by our contractor and we expect that to complete on time. And we did not expect that to be a problem in, in our parallel testing. We already have been able to take the right kinds of badge information feeds for testing previously. That will continue. So I don't expect that to be a problem. Related to hours in our budget, we, we have, and I made this statement and it's still true. We have forecasted hours out through March. What we are reporting is some, some differences if we, that, that were, that we have reconciled and shown differences where, where we got the actuals from, from OBM. And then we included those in our forecast. So we, we've estimated low. We've made some adjustments. We will continue to look at our forecast and every month if we need to adjust it, we will, we will include it in our monthly statements. But it's not that it was not considered at all. Okay? Related to items for phase two, I, I did an entire briefing here on phases one, two and three in terms of how things would lay out from 2020, 2021, 2022, and then possibly into 2023. And that's, in that briefing, I laid out exactly where I thought the version 11 or what the appropriate version upgrade would be, the year that it would fall in. And the modules that would go live in 2021, 2022. So that, that has been briefed. What I did not do was I did not have costing associated with that at this point. But we certainly know what our targets are and what the years are that they're going to fall in. And we would expect that we're going to do the capital budgeting associated with that. It just wasn't included in that briefing, but the strategy was clear. So we do have a plan and we're going to look hard at version 11 in, in the, in the appropriate year. So that's, those were just some of the things I wanted to respond directly to, to be clear about what you were looking at and, and be clarified that what I reported previously was accurate. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thanks very much for the presentation. Do we have any further questions for Mr. Burson?
May I ask a question of Jack?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. So do you feel at this point that there is enough in the budget for phase one to complete it and that will there be dollars left over? Will you need to come back for more dollars? Where are you in completing phase one? And then I have a follow-up question.
I, I am not projecting that we would exceed the remaining amount of, of appropriated funds at this time. As I, I had said previously, I, I don't estimate that we will exceed that. What I did try to clarify in the budget portion of my presentation was that we, we have taken although we increased in for's hours, we also decreased by almost the exact amount. It was only an eight, almost $9,000 difference. Only a $9,000 difference between what we, we decreased some of our 1099 contractor hours to make room in, in the, in the budget for the in for hours that we increased and some other changes we made. So we are trying to manage within, within that budget as closely as possible. The biggest increase that we had, and I think to get point this out, was, was in, in the county hours. It, it, those are dollars that didn't impact the overall general budget. We're paying employees what we're paying employees. That is a true statement. But the contracting, you know, money going outside the county here to other contracts, we're trying to manage very closely within. And I, we have accounted for all of what we believe the contract costs are, you know, minus some obscure change order that I'm not aware of, but we, we have managed this pretty closely to finish within our budget.
All right, thank you. And if I may, Chair, just to continue with that. So are you prepared at this time or in the very near future? Given that phase two was originally supposed to be all in the same package, but we broke it out and now we're looking at a phase one cost and now we're looking at a phase two cost, which will exceed, again, the original funding that we thought this project was going to take. Are you prepared now or very near future what the cost will be for phase two?
I, I am not prepared now for that, for that question. We, I know that Zig had quoted a much earlier estimate of, I think it was 1.2 million dollars. We need to do some, some analysis on that. You know, part of what we had, the intent for phase two, going back to somewhere around a year ago, was that we, as much as possible, we would do that with in-house county resources. And we, we've staffed up for quite a bit of that, if not all of that. We're going to need some consulting assistance on some of these things, but we're, we're working hard between now and when we face two would actually start, which is next year. We're, we're going to be continuing to work hard to make sure we fill those, those gaps in knowledge that we need with county resources to the fullest if possible to minimize our consulting cost. That will, and that was the key to bringing our costs down below the numbers that were originally quoted. We are not done with that process yet.
All right, it's what I remember. And Chair, just one last question. And I'll speak for myself on this. I, I am very disappointed in the 13-week delay in the in-for contracted reports. And we are now again delayed with the October 2nd report. And then there's another report due tomorrow, 10/9. And it doesn't look like there's any reason for those delays except for an intentional not wanting to give it to us yet. And maybe there may be a reason for a week or two, hoping things may look better. But 13 weeks is an awful long time for us to be unaware of the progress. And we are again looking at a, a report a week late now, 10/2, and then we're looking at a report 10/9. Is that report going to be on time? I just find that discouraging.
Well, we have, we have tried to provide interim briefings along the way here, independent of those weekly reports. So we've tried to provide information and answer questions along the way. No, certainly no intent to not report anything here. The, the concern, as I mentioned in some previous conversations, was that we, we've been in the process of making changes to that schedule and the schedule was an integral part of that report. I would have been better served to just release the reports, even if I didn't have the complete schedule in there. I acknowledge that. And that criticism is well placed and our intent is to get these up to date and keep them up to date.
So will that 10/2 and 10/9 report be coming?
I have the 10/2 report in my hands and I'll be able to release that. And the, the, the next report I would expect to be pretty close on time here.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And I would like to make everybody aware that the next set of briefings will take place, the administration report will be in Finance and Budgeting Committee on November 30th on Monday at regular time at 1 o'clock. And the report from Mr. Burson's will be on the following Thursday on December 3rd at 1 o'clock. And this comes just a few days after the target date for the interfaces, which is one of the key items in their detailed schedule on the payroll implementation. So this will give us a chance to, to get a pretty close to real time update on whether we're tracking on schedule. And just one further question to Mr. Ryan, if I may. I heard some indications that we would get an update about the, the capital planning for future phases at the, the time when the budget update is submitted, which is four weeks from now in, in early November. My question is, is whether that is a realistic expectation or did I not quite get that right?
No, sir. Yes, sir. I guess we, we, we do intend to have capital budget numbers, at least our forecasted numbers by the time we, we have the rest of the capital budget presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, well, we have had a considerable discussion and, and a lot of good information that indicates that we're moving forward, but we continue to have things that we legitimately can be concerned about and will be continuing to watch closely. So thank you very much, Mr. Burson's and Mr. Ryan. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any miscellaneous business.
No questions. No.
Hearing none. Nothing further commands our attention, so I say that this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for their time and attention.